He was pretty funny.
The scene is still on, I'll watch it.
Well, it's on the YouTube channel.
Bring it to me? No, I talked him today, he just got talked his board, that has nothing to do with you. He said nothing about that, so he's got to talk to his board about that, I can't make that decision for the board. About to start our meeting, Jesus Christ. Good evening, everyone. We were called, sorry, we were called to order the regular meeting of Marshall Borough Council, September 16th, 2019. If you all please rise from a silence in our pledge of allegiance, then we'll begin.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if we could have a roll call whenever you're ready, Virginia.
Here.
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 You want mayor again?
Thank you. I've announced for an executive session through our attorney, will mention it?
Yeah, after this particular section of the agenda, we're going to take a brief executive session to discuss a personnel issue and also the resolution of a legal issue.
Okay, so we will recess for this executive session at 7:01. Thank you.
I don't know if that came off, I guess we haven't had a chat, but as soon as this is done.
Or your way.
Wait, was your house?
Not in your room?
No, I saw it, a little old couple that worked, it was packed, this. I think they're just the ones. I don't get it. I know.
Maybe it's not just one of them back before, something about.
Oh.
This is crazy.
I usually see it more than I do, like I can go up to the back bedroom and see where's your house.
The house that tried to sell my, the one that's in the end, because. So him's just next to me, and they're in the middle corner. So we're next to him, and then Christopher. We're in the house that we're trying to fix ourselves.
Your son?
Not yet, I mean, it's not definitely not. Yeah, Katie's sophomore, Matthew's a senior, but not to any time soon, but for 20 years of collection, it's going to take 10 years. That's a big house, I mean, it's not like the old, the old ones in the basement, you know?
I had that all my life, so.
I'm not going anywhere. Like every year, once we went to work, yeah, no time, no time, so many days, good times. Yeah, so Ann, don't tell, don't go around telling people what's going on. What else, oh my. You're still moving. They bought a townhouse in St. Joe's Court.
Oh, okay, so they stayed here.
Yeah, so they did, yeah, I know. And my mother was wanting to come, my parents were very nice, you know, she's easily set, so it's such a.
I always.
And Katie just got her moving apartment.
I think it was almost a fall. She got her ALC or something.
Yeah.
She had her done, and she said it would be six months or longer, I haven't seen her all, I haven't seen her.
But now she's, now she's walking around. I have a really nice air hockey table, and I can't.
I know. He's probably like 13. Is that too old?
Not, not as.
About right, they're.
Let me ask her, I work with her, only like 13 years.
That's a good age, that's a good age.
Yeah, it's in our basement, it's in really good condition, and I just can't.
I'll find her right now.
And John keeps saying, where am I putting my house? I'm like, I'm not putting it on the public.
Were you able to sell? No, we sold nothing, I think.
That's, that's.
A yard sale, so nobody bought anything.
The only thing is, well, we did one time, we put stuff out, because you know how people just come and they'll pick up their trash?
Whatever you call it. But they don't come down around the road, so.
Well, we have a guy come.
I don't think it's about time.
That's so sad.
So she's graduating from the high school this year? I'm not really ready. Too bad. The other house is probably him, that's the one, are you still wanting?
I don't know where he's getting the money. Yeah, from all these street runs, this year, yeah, we have not, Katie did it the last couple of years, but my niece started going, I don't want to risk it, so.
My brother ran a bunch of marriages, like the Boston. He did the Broad Street run and everything. And he had the missile prepared, went great, five years ago, it's great.
I have one, thanks.
Yeah, so no, I think he'll do it, but you know.
It's very soothing.
I probably make every possible.
You okay? Let me get, it's all the notes for tonight, you want to?
No, is that where I got whole rooms? That's what, because John's right now, he went down the whole hallway in the courtyard, and he did high hats, so we all went down there. And so then we have a tiny penthouse in the foyer, but not, not real far, you know, we have a lot of. I couldn't decide if I wanted to tie that to my house, but then I'm like, I don't want to talk too much like.
I know you were going to do that, I would have came, why not?
Comes out, it's. John wants to be there.
I deal with that all the time.
So you're going to come out when John's here? Yes, that would be very nice.
You can check it on me.
Yeah, but he had Matthew water, so that was pretty cool, yeah, yeah, I mean, he's tall, which is good, but just in case, electrician is always there, he helps his John. Matthew's a senior, yeah, he's, yeah, he's. John is by trade, he's a product, he's been in the office for years, he's like, yeah, 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 so he's amazing. My brother's in there, my nephew is, and my cousin is, so.
Tom, yes? Oh, here you go. What's that?
Well, we sell cable box.
Oh, oh, is that one voltage? Wait, what?
Yeah, why don't you pay it? Now, do you have fiance, a fiance, and show for electric? Yeah, I want to get it.
We have, no, we could, there's a home street, it's on the electric store, and so we have radiator, which I love.
Sorry, Anne, for the.
Oh, no, 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 I, a friend of mine's having surgery, so I'm going to give her one.
Yeah, I really have to deal with this.
I'll see you later. And I got an operating machine, so you want to talk to us?
I had to leave.
You do it here.
I think we did it to restore.
I wish they would add that here. Sitting on these sixes.
They stole, sorry, they don't want, they don't want your phone?
I don't know what that is, but the woman, I think that came up a couple of times, I think that.
Oh, that's my phone? I saw it sitting there, and I thought somebody left their phone.
They're not getting it.
I know. Debbie, do you find it like something?
No, well, probably right around us, we'll be. No, I just saw one in Washington in a couple of days, it was hard a couple of years ago, but now it's not, but right around us, right where that is going on, well, first of all, I mean, looking at that yellow house.
Yellow house, a young, green car, it's old.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the white ones, down at the. Or the door lead, yeah. You know, you got to be the best of the house. Yeah, I know, yeah, they're not, they're not, they don't have a lot of the. But no, otherwise. No, I know, though, but I know that he used to come over and talk to me. What happened? What happened with the fire, because I called when there was a fire in the Target, and I thought it was the weekend.
Oh, is that, is that why the fire truck came up?
But I couldn't see them from my house, I just looked and tried to see if they'd come. Matthew told me, I was at work, he said the fire truck just. What was that, two nights, didn't you drive, and fires, and I say, you know, like, I'm not allowed to drive, and he's like. He doesn't think that's what they were doing, so, and I'm driving by, looking, and I'm like, wait a minute, these two grown up guys. I don't know, so maybe I don't know, and it's like. But from my house, I'm like, I didn't think that it happened when you were alive. So I need to date, so we find out.
Yeah, because you texted me, and I said, no, Matthew told me, just a week ago that happened, wow, I think it was two weeks, I think it was probably on labor guys. I mean, your girls.
Oh, getting big.
Yeah, you might know.
No, I wasn't hearing about it, I didn't know, but I.
One might think of it as the commercials.
I know.
Yeah, because I put it on in the base, not like.
Yeah, it's just a matter of.
Step four, chat.
I mean, there is a shuttle. From the manor. I think that very, that's very interesting story. We have pre-registration, I had to provide the deed to our house to utility bill, photo acting, with our address. And that was kind of the district, I had to find that. It's a very stringent pre-registration.
Well, I'm from, I'm from.
That's what people, that's what people complain, that there's people that Trenton. They have to.
And how are we better off to be out of Pennsbury?
How would you make that happen?
How come those towns, from the wing?
How would you get Pennsbury to accept this?
So is that what we, what we want to?
Let's try, right? The state can't make them, years ago, Pennsbury wanted to be part of.
Years ago, yeah, right.
Because we had a steel mill, or a tire plant, or whatever we had down there. And the state can't make them, you can't make them, they are not interested, our school district has reached out to Bristol Borough, Bristol Township, Pennsbury, nobody wants us.
It's very much annoying about Pennsbury, because the reason why.
We're surrounded by Pennsbury.
And the reason why they want it was apartments, but they have most of the apartments in Pennsbury, so why?
I mean, why don't they want the apartments?
Wait. Wait, the. The apartments are part of Morristown or Pennsbury?
There's. Some are Morristown, some are. We see the school buses playing on Placerville Park, and taking some of the children that live in the apartments on Placerville Park to the Pennsbury schools. And a lot of the, some of the apartments are on the Morristown side, so it's just like LaFayette Avenue, one side of LaFayette is Falls Township, and one side is Morristown. On Trenton Avenue, that side of Trenton Avenue is Morristown, this side is Pennsbury, so.
It's crazy, to me, it's more.
I'm with you, but how would you solve it?
I would ensure what, that's, I would say one, the.
It's Pennsbury.
To me, it's more about the future of.
Stateability.
No, and also, why won't you go on to human education, you know they have more educational offers, this is your future.
It's combining reasons.
An older person, it doesn't matter, you know, that wherever the person was educated, as long as they were educated, but you don't know where you're going to end up.
Are you talking like?
Fair education, and options, you know what I mean?
I mean, I can speak from experience, our daughter has sent me to Morristown School since Pittsburgh, she's graduating this year, so I can help you. Yeah, she's graduating this year, yay, college. You know, when we moved here, before we moved here, people said, you know, the Morristown, hey, it's a typical one in the town, oh, you know, Morristown. No, I don't, well, if you buy a house in Morristown, you cannot send it to the schools. Probably, no, I don't, I would like to see them, so I'm not going to take anybody else's word for it. Our philosophy always was, put her in a public school, if she's not thriving there. Or if she's dangerous, then put her somewhere else, you know, or if it's dangerous, show me a school that's not dangerous, Parkland, Florida, you know, that was really dangerous for those kids. Then we'll put her in a private school, and we had never helped do that. And then when it was time for her to choose a high school, she chose to stay in Morristown, and she had other options.
You had to go to yourself, you're actually.
He just enrolled her in kindergarten, and.
Yeah, but if you check.
See how it went. No, we just set her on her own, like, there you go, kid, you're on your own. Yeah, there was some heat in the summer, they had tacos and something at the playground for all the incoming visitors.
How did we find out about that?
And, and it's just, to me, it's not the testing, because your daughter sounds almost like the exception to the point, because whenever it's, the grades are posted in the paper, we always have found the grades, we always have found the grades.
But that's the standardized test, you know, the standardized.
I was told.
That was into grade on her safety. Right, she just scored a safety score, she's a great. I agree on that, I have a master's in science and nursing, I have 27 years of experience as a practitioner, I graduated from public school, John graduated from public school, he went to Penn State, like, not fancy college, school is what you make it, you get in or you're out. And she has friends, they're all looking at colleges, running for Morristown, babysitter that graduated from Morristown five years ago, graduated, she just got her first teaching job in the area. I can tell you a story, a story like that, you know, when you read the newspaper, that's not the same as knowing your kids. You know, going to the.
What are the signs?
Going for a career day.
When you said, well, like, you know, you look up the signs of the class, it pays attention.
Okay, Emma has 50 kids in her faculty class.
Yeah, that's not a whole lot.
In the senior class, so the way in the. 25 kids in each class. That's her. She has juniors and sophomores in her classes, so it's not, she's not just in class with seniors. We have a tiny, she's taking English, calculus, honors English, economics, world cultures. She's taking A to calculus, honors English, uh, economics, uh, world cultures.
Isn't that exceptional?
No, cause they would have, she's not the only one in the class, right? Her A D. She's not the only kid doing A D.
It's really, a lot of the. But she's not.
I know.
And I'm her mother, and if anybody's gonna say brag about her, you know, I mean, she's exceptional in a lot of ways, but she's not an, um. She's an above average student, but she's not the smartest student in the class.
Well, here's what I think. Uh, the school, um, this, I heard it from up there, from someone else.
It maybe has no personal.
No, what they're saying.
It does have personal.
Um, from someone else.
Okay.
The school is basically, it works in their favor not to have, uh, a good grade. If they wanted to be a failing school, it's a lot, I don't know how that works.
No, that's my husband's school.
Yeah, I don't think that.
All about, all about the funding.
But like, like they were advised, the overachieving kids were advised to go elsewhere because they're not being.
That's horrible.
Yeah.
That is.
Well, I don't know, I'm just, I'm.
That, I, I, I know that. My husband's home school, and he has some teachers. So I can tell you, there are mandates for funding, like, we have to fund special ed. We have to fund teacher retirement stuff, right? But, um, nobody tells kids.
Was that my son?
Nobody says.
My son has a lot of.
Kids, we want under.
Didn't you have a like, no. I don't know.
Our school board president, David Miller, um, has two children, and, and their younger child just graduated south of.
Thirty so fast.
That's the president of our school board. Sends this, um, which found a coin, but into the RIT, so.
Yeah, which was like, yeah, just this year. No, I, I went to one of the schools, nothing, no.
Criminals. Like, our access organs. Okay, there's a living in here. But also something I heard in the nurse yesterday, this is from the school board member, who was, said, I heard that. Read the whole thing at halftime and got a small. I said, I know all of your leaders, and I know their kids at that school, it's on top of their school everywhere, it's on top, but. One of those students that really tested it into their personality. So people here on high school, you see her, and she knows everybody in the class, or people on the campus. Do you wear it? It's like, no, they don't have time. I don't know. But that's how we're in this school, and, oh, yeah, I know this happened, I hear this happens, and what about this, and what about that? Can you show me the school where kids don't fight, where kids don't smoke cigarettes, where kids don't smoke, and where kids don't drink? Can you show me a high school where that, where that takes it? That is not your high school, right?
No, it's not.
It happens at every high school.
It happens at every high school, everywhere.
Put the bus at San Juan quick before they.
Around the eighties. No, it's.
Go home and smoke and drink.
Yeah. Right, definitely happens at every school.
Right, there's fights, there's, 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 there's. Please, and wash.
Again, I just.
This is ridiculous, my father.
I think.
Maybe it's a double feature.
Don't act like we leave and then they'll come out. I don't know if they can see.
Thank you, Nancy.
I mean, that's, John, are we on, are we on camera now?
Are you on camera?
Yeah, and.
No.
Okay.
They probably can hear you call.
No.
Wow.
You sound like my tone.
Even more than walking, I'm fine, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know, right on there, I had to leave, cause you were also.
Both wanted yours to be talking. A friend of mine is. I'm good. I'm not saying anything. All the mics are loud. Someone's always watching on TV.
Or Spanish. Why? I see a man making a Jesus.
It's like, I'm gonna go bragging people down. Maybe we should just walk.
He didn't say anything.
Well, we gotta.
Um, I mean, it's not, it's not. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's not like.
Oh, that's funny. You guys think you're good? Great for their.
Thank, I thank. I want the audio. At least about half hour. They should have it before the meeting.
They can't. It has to be during the advertised period of meeting.
Does it?
Yes.
Do it, eh? It's a public comment.
Well, sometimes what they discuss in there needs to be subject to public comment.
God was up for the next day, clean, clean all this. Pass it. Pick, pick it up. That's how bad. I hope these are for. The rains coming. I'm going to do what's going to be. Third night. Tell it to them. Did you, did you? Did you? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Man's one, but. Kind of way to count. Wait, wait, it's the week before, so. I'm down there the week after. I hope them, well, not maybe, I hope them.
I just wondered if you did.
Oh, yeah.
Put me in, put me in.
That, that, that way, I would put the.
Opposite, yeah.
Because it, now they were loving, I walked in, I missed the missus.
That's good though.
I, I would lose out sometimes. Because it's. Okay, I missed the missus.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's not helping in the meg, I thought. Thank you, it's here. Remember to help.
Oh, I know, yeah, it's a lot, it's good, actually.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but you're welcome, like, I mean, it's, it is. I've tried to do a job. Well, you had water that fell there. Not like, no, not like that, but then, when it got warm or whatever, the water disappeared, yeah. It warmed there, whatever. They're, they're, they're very self, we told them. By the way, that, that's relief, and when it rained, that could damage the street again. That's very old topic. I mean, you could, you could live. Uh, what happens? She got, uh, Santa's same place.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's what I think.
Like easier to take.
Right, right. Right, yeah. I'm like, I'm like, I'm like, I'm like. She went out there. She's a really. She went, I know, but she went to LA where she went out to sit in the. Yeah, yeah.
You don't have to get to go. I'm gonna keep my voice down. I'm gonna go right up to the mic, go, well, that's.
Yeah, 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 I know, I have. Yeah, that's what he does.
You figure they would have.
Very much.
We'll talk, I mean. Thank you. I don't know, my, my husband's watching him on. I'm back in the room now. All right. I'll talk to you later. All right. She said she didn't turn the light. Still barely.
Yeah.
Oh, no, thanks. Thank you for thinking of me. She said, sure, we, is it really big? And I said, full size, sixty. She's like, it was, no, thanks.
Very more than they say.
I know, I know, it's true.
I already got my tickets ready. My neighbor down the street has season tickets. Um, he gave me like five, eight. It's not good at all. And he just turned it, they just got it.
Even it's an effort, right?
Yeah.
He's a man's funny. I'm married, you know, you know.
Oh, I am, that's funny.
Something else I'd like to ask you, I think question. I don't get why you can get tickets if I was yourself.
Sometimes that.
That happened, yeah, that, that was a lot of. Every thirty five.
Just again, yeah.
If you don't get it. If they can get any, thirty five.
That is saying.
Listen to on the radio. A whole thing. Same thing. I didn't have any tickets, I didn't even know, I didn't even know.
You're talking about baseball.
Yeah. I just have the, on vacation, and I just happen to be there. Everybody. We have to bring two, two more questions to you, Jay. I'm, I'm, I'm.
Is it the beginning of this?
There's like an. They have, they have like.
You can say the split case, she was in high square.
Um, they got to ask you a few answers, let's play ball. Everybody's soaking wet. I thought that. That is. We have to hit it double, which is okay. Oh, because they.
Oh, you know. Yeah.
It's not forget that.
Yeah.
That's rare, probably. Water, the poison double. Then you say, "Yeah, of course it does." Yeah, right. The bad ones. Yeah. Yeah. Well, you want. Yeah, right. Yeah. I know one. All right, here we go. All right, I will watch.
See you, Mr. Stone.
Well, good evening. Thanks, kid. They couldn't hear. I'm trying, just doesn't work. See you later. Be good.
Yeah, but you can't, I mean, like, it's always twenty-twenty.
Have a good evening.
You're giving up?
I'm giving up. I'll come back next month. Much like, obviously, content. I'll come back next month.
I might submit my comments and have them read later.
That's a good idea. You should have put it in there half hour ago. You would have walked.
Then I could have gone.
Yeah.
I could have been holding my pajamas.
Yeah, what are you doing? On the budget.
Don't fall asleep back here, dude.
Now, it's November seventh. Two days after the election. They let one police officer go. And once a month before this year, they terminated the contact with the police officer. Surprise. I mean, they just found that. I have an armed police officer. And the borough and the school had a proper agreement where they shared the cost of the police officer. One police officer at our school.
Yeah. Yeah, this one, anyway.
Oh, no, they cut the force. The safety, you know, they ran out safely. And all that, you know, going to play your piece down. They, um, they cut a full-time police officer. Now they're having some personnel issues with another officer. So they're down. For the latest, the police officer cut off. Threatened, threatened, came up as a citizen. Along with a failed hire. It's like moving on that. That's simply a shame. As a police officer. And.
Oh, my, like, they. Oh, my, crazy.
They did bring something to the department. So, um, I'm hoping too, but it's not.
Why would you do that?
Me. You know, it's not just.
I know, it was a problem.
You know.
No.
So, anyway, we're down.
No, no, I don't think so.
No, no, we don't think so. So, anyway, we're down, a police officer, at least. They, middle of August, last Monday, our school, they had a reset session and decided they were out of the four-year agreement. They weren't going to honor the agreement to fund the student police officers.
But I think that almost surpassed.
School, they say they need them on the street. Well, our school needs a presence, you know, who knows what he may have prevented. Just by his presence.
Yeah, personally, I think there are day pass.
He's in. He's in, and he talks to the kids and circulates around, and when there's a problem, he's there.
There are day pass. There are day pass.
Most, most schools, in Parkland High School, we had one that he stood outside as a shot. Helped. That, that guy was very shy. Yes, school resources. We had, I mean, we were out of the school.
How was it going? Good. Good to do that.
She was what?
Grayling.
Oh, Grayling, right. Yeah, so now she's at ten minutes.
Who's her, who's her, she's in through the night, right? This is.
Okay.
Yeah.
You just know she loves.
Is it Jenna Wait?
I know.
Jenna Wait? She is, I think she's.
That was their home. Will the rest of them be out, or you don't know?
Was that?
Are they, the rest of them coming?
They, they will be. Uh, they've had one of them to.
Yes, wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. Because I know on the people, they just. Did you see that?
Yeah.
That was a nice.
Yeah.
I have some good news. I have, I don't know, eight big part. Him and I disagree. I love the plan. It's too ambitious, I think, too far.
Because not just in officials, you know, again, you want to deal with this, so it would be a big problem. You can't, if you can't deal with that, it will happen. Those are the, you will come, why do you want to come to us? Do you have anything?
If you have something, wait. We run up the phone and we have one.
Hotel, are we, are we, are we? And why would, who, who got punished? Who?
I don't know, there's a lot of people that come with all this.
That's good, right? The movie's made in that.
He wants to see something, you know. Yeah, but that doesn't mean the rest of it's even more, I mean.
I'm not saying, well, I'm saying, I guess. By talking to somebody, I'm asking my problem.
I, I think that part is a problem. A bunch of children.
All want to see it. All want to see that the police have to be, be so. How you can be able to talk about activity, what. You do, how do you know? What you found those, both on the boards, with hands. What, how did that turn into a collective?
And we want to keep her waiting.
Oh, it's so hot back there.
He's on there.
Could have taken your jacket off.
Every minute of that, I was waiting for it to end, though.
I know.
We're about, we're about to resume our meeting. It is seven fifty-five. Thank you so much for your patience. You don't need to say anything right at this point.
No, the executive session, really concerned in ongoing personnel matter and one legal matter.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we will open public comment. If you could please keep your comments to three minutes. Ms. Larson will time you, let you know when you get to the one-minute timeline. Please state your name and record and address for the record, please. So the first one would be Bill Mender, if he's still here. Did he, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, he couldn't wait. We weren't expecting that executive session tonight, so. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for doing. Okay, the next, I'm so sorry, I lose my voice. The next one is Hossam Jalad. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hossam Jalad, forty-five Ridge Ave. Today, I'm here, as you probably all know, it's the same issue that we've been dealing with, party house. And I will continue to attend these meetings, and you'll probably see me till we get a resolution on this issue. Just to update you, as some of you probably already knows about the Friday incident, Friday night, eleven-thirty incident, of a guy got dropped off from our house, and he was knocking on neighbors' houses and acting and behaving in a bizarre way. Of course, the police were notified. And then eventually, right before the police showed up, he ended up going to the direction of the party house. And this morning, as I'm on my way to drop off my daughter to school, I, um, I see a bunch of people coming out of the party house, loading and unloading luggage. It looks like the business is operating even, you know, even more robust than, than before. So, this is obviously a problem that is just getting worse as time goes by. And without any, um, without any consequences for such thing, you know, it, it looks like it's just gonna go out of hand. And we're dealing with the consequences every day. So, again, I, and I appreciate a little more clarity on the process of how it's just being dealt with. I do understand there are certain things that you cannot discuss, but it's also will help us to clarify, what can you discuss? As far, there were, there was an inspection schedule for Friday. I was around Friday, I didn't see anybody coming by. Maybe it's more so to have an inspector car that is, you know, more noticeable then, so we know what's, who's going around and what's going around. You know, just the fact that I know there were people staying there for, since Wednesday, and they probably, it's probably the people that left this morning. Who knows if they left or not? Or what I'm saying, that I know there were people staying at that house. If this inspection happened, I'm sure that the inspector would have found transients at the time. How does that tie into the whole process? I, I just, I think it's not clear to us, and it's hard, I, I hope you understand from our point, it's not having, you know, not being told what's going on. It keeps us speculating, and that's not good either. So, it would help us if you just, you know, give us maybe a timeline. That's what we're asking for, a timeline. Just to put things in perspective for us.
I can tell you, after twenty-five years practicing law, there is no way anybody can give you a timeline for resolution on any legal controversy, especially one that's ongoing. To the extent there's an expectation that a zoning officer can go there, and, you know, that's going to result in the immediate shutdown of the thing. I mean, there's a process that has to go on. Our firm is not handling the, uh, the district justice hearings. I think that I discussed that with you after the last meeting. There's another firm that's involved. They're going to be handling all the court proceedings about that. There's a district justice hearing, there's, uh, for both the zoning violation as well as criminal violations on the part of the owner. And there's a possibility of further legal action being filed. However, since my firm is not handling that aspect of it, I can't really comment on stuff that I'm not doing.
Okay. So where does that take us on a day-to-day, you know, and incidents that happen?
On a day-to-day basis, there is, like I said, there are court proceedings pending against the guy. That can result in the imposition of both financial and criminal sanctions. We would hope that as things begin to snowball for him, that, that will dissuade this use, as it has in the neighboring township. Who, by the way, I mean, you know, they had an enforcement mechanism in place a good year before Marsville, at least, at least a year. So, you know, there's a certain amount of catching up that the borough has to do, but other than, other than that, I mean, I can't comment on, you know, what the inspector, you know, found or didn't find, or I just haven't been informed as to that, so I can't really comment on those. However, we're more than well aware of the issue, and believe me, the borough is taking an aggressive stance to stopping the use.
That, that's really all we're gonna say at this time. That's why the manager sent you the message he did in the email.
Sure.
We're not commenting anymore publicly as we're proceeding with it. It has to go through the legal process.
Okay, well, you're just gonna have to, you're gonna have to see me more often, and I will keep you updated with all the, you know, of what we experience as, you know, time goes by, because it looks like every day there's something with this guy in, in the houses.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Next is Ann Perry. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, good evening, Ann Perry, forty-three Fairview Avenue. So I'm here tonight to talk about the budget. I have serious concerns as a taxpayer as to why the budget hearings are being pushed off till November. Typically, they're held in September, where promised we would hear something about the twenty-twenty budget in September. And I see your Action Item Nine I is the call for the motion to have the budget, the public hearings, which I hope will be televised, November seventh and eighth, strikingly after the election on November fifth. I'm just curious about that. So I would like some assurance that they will be televised. I'm wondering why they've been pushed off. It's cutting it a little close to adopt a budget by year's end. That's happening December sixteenth, according to your minutes. So, I'm also concerned about the lack of transparency in the whole process. Recent track record, losing a full-time police officer less than a month before the start of the school year. You're abandoning the school resource officer agreement with the school district. So, I'm just curious what the shift in the timeline is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Newhart?
Weinhardt.
Weinhardt, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Lisa Weinhardt, eight-four-six North Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm here to follow up Hossam's statement. I understand a lot has been done towards party house. We all may know it's not so much of a party house anymore, thanks to our police force and LMT, who always came out to shut the parties down. However, due to that lack of activity, the increase in rental activity of transient people has increased. As Hossam said, Friday night, eleven-thirty, stranger walking around, knocking on doors, that's just dangerous in so many aspects. You don't know what a homeowner's gonna do, you don't know what the guy wandering around knocking on people's doors is going to do. It all comes back to, once again, one person creating this dangerous situation in a neighborhood that is unnecessary. There shouldn't be people wandering around in the middle of the night, or for that matter, at five-thirty in the morning, and that's happened. As, you know, close neighbors will keep documenting things, but I agree with Hossam. I get it that you can't talk about ongoing leading, legal proceedings, but is what we're documenting still being used? Is, is it going to be part of the, the defense or prosecution, I'm sorry? Are we wasting our time here? It, it is frustrating, I'm sure it's frustrating on your part, hearing us, but we have to keep following up. Otherwise, I, I just feel that this is going to continue even worse. And for that matter, I've heard that a sale is pending on one-twenty-five Maple Street. So, i- is this spreading throughout the borough? The same individual being able to rent out Airbnbs? I, I just think that if we had a little bit more to go on. Again, as neighbors, it's very frustrating, and I didn't realize it, but I'm gonna follow up on Ann. I'm a little frustrated with the budget thing also, because I don't understand why that's being put off. I'm concerned about the safety of our neighborhood. I don't want to see more budget cuts to our police force, saddened to hear that the officer is being taken out of the school. We need our police force. They are here to protect us, and especially with what's going on with us, we really depend on them. So I'd like to know also why the budget. So I'd like to know also why the budget was put off. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Chmetsbelski? Is she, she's not here? All right. Okay, thank you. Then I will close public comment this time. The only thing I'm going to say when it comes to the budget is that last year, when we decided to do something a little bit different, because the previous councils, they never passed a budget, and they never even gave the budget out to even work on it until the middle of November, sometimes the end of November. I look back on all the budgets. No one complained. No one. You didn't complain, I know that. So we figured that the numbers would be closer as to your revenues and your expenditures as you got into November. It still gives six weeks. We start working on that process in the beginning of November. It still gives six weeks to pass that budget. If you can't pass a budget, when your numbers are that close by the time you get there, then you got problems. So for us, when we looked at it and gave the manager a little more time, he's also doing stuff for this analysis for the police department. He's got enough things to be going on with that, with the survey, on top of all that. As far as I know, I don't see any cuts to that police department. As far as the SRO, everyone knows, it's not public comment, I'm just making a statement. The SRO, everyone knows that our job is to make sure our police are on the street. That SRO is our officer first, and when our officer got in trouble and we needed a cop on our street, we aren't making adjustments. Everyone is well aware of what went on with that, so that's why that officer was there. It wasn't something we did against the school district for any particular reason. I spoke with Damon about it today. He understands all that. We're in a tough situation with some things going on with our police department that we just can't discuss. That's one of our meetings tonight, so that's where we sit with that.
Madam President, if I may, to ask you a quick question. Since your involvement, has there ever been an election year where the budget has been discussed before the new people coming in to council have been elected?
Never.
Okay.
Just to piggyback off of what some of the residents have said, since this is coming up now, since you made a statement now. Again, I'm just gonna say, and myself, I'm frustrated in the public also as well, because I asked in May, and I asked in June, and I asked in July, and I asked in August, and I was told, and the public was told, that we were going to be getting a budget in September. So again, it's frustrating, and it's confusing, and it's concerning that now, also that the administration wanted to have a budget meeting on October 21st, and again, that was moved weeks to November 7th. So again, I would just echo from what a couple of the residents said, it's concerning, especially with what happened at the end of the year last year.
Corinne, how long have you been on council?
Should be a conversation. I'm just saying.
Well, I'm just saying, we have never had it before November, December.
The council president decided to make a statement, so again, I'm just agreeing with a couple of our residents.
All right, well, you got a chance to speak too, then. Okay, one last statement, and I'm moving on from this. This is public comment, or my statement from it.
Okay, I just want to say, I've been on council for numerous years, and Corinne has as well. And we have never had a budget presented to us before November. Most times, it was December. We've never had it in September or October.
So why was I told September, in May, in June, in July, in August?
All right, point of order, we're done with this at this point. If you don't want to vote for the motion when it comes up, please don't vote for it, whatever your conscience says. We're moving on. Next, we're gonna move on to the finance. Everyone... Oh, I'm sorry. Sexy approval of the minutes. I will let everyone know that we didn't receive the ones this week for 8/1919, so they're gonna be removed, and they will be voted on at next month's meeting. So you will only be voting on the 8/1319. So I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of 8/1319.
So...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Okay, now into the finance. 7A was your Treasury report, which is your budget. If anyone has any questions on that, you can bring it up now. I will combine it with 7B, which is the approval for the bill list and to pay the bills. Can I have a motion for 7A, 7B?
So moved. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, second. Any questions or comments on either one of those motions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Next is the reports. The mayor isn't here to give a report tonight. We're gonna move on to the action items. 9A, it's called for motion to acknowledge receipt of the annual municipal obligation forms, or MMO, for both the police-uniformed and the non-uniformed pension plans to be submitted to the Pennsylvania municipal retirement system by October 4th, 2019, and authorizing the borough manager to execute the necessary documents. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call whenever you're ready? Thank you.
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9B, call for motion to approve a millage payment in the amount of $77,080 to the Marshall Fire Company as per the 2019 Fire Fund budget contingent upon receipt of payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? I have a roll call, please.
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9C, call for motion to approve a millage payment in the amount of $41,995 to the Capitol Health as per the 2019 EMS Fund budget contingent upon receipt of payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? I have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9D, call for motion to award the annual 2019-2020 consortium salt bid as bid for the Bucks County Consortium to Morton Salt Incorporated, per their bid price of $48.50 per ton, delivered and $48 price per ton, undelivered, contract to run to September 30th, 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9E, call for motion to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with Edmunds GovTech for new financial accounting system, cost not to exceed $68,930, without approval of Borough Council. Funds used for payment will not come from the general fund. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Can we have a roll call on it, please?
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
No.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
No.
Councilwoman Parker?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-3. Motion 9F, call for motion to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with Tracer for new infrastructure and asset management and workflow management system. Cost not to exceed $11,000 without approval of Borough Council. Funds used for payment will not come from the general fund. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion?
I do, actually. Can we borrow Mr. Later for a minute? Can I ask him a quick question? Because this is Public Works related. If he's available. So I just want to hear from you, because this is obviously something that's gonna be, your team is gonna be using this quite a bit. Do you personally see the value in this?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and it's something that you're gonna get a lot of use out of on a daily basis?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
Just remember, if I could point out, almost every department will be involved in this, not just Public Works.
Fair enough.
I'm sure it will help quite a bit with tracking what you need when it comes to your budget stuff, too. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
No.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
No.
Councilwoman Parker?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yang?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-3. Motion 9G, call for motion to authorize the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 2489, to host their first annual Harvest Day on Saturday, November 2nd, and to permit the temporary closure of East Philadelphia Avenue adjacent to the Fraternal Order of Eagles Lodge from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion?
Is this Philadelphia from Pennsylvania to Washington? Or is it literally just right in front of the Eagles, the building? Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The whole street, from Pennsylvania to Washington?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Right, right.
Okay, so do we need to...
I think the answer was probably, yes, the whole block will be closed, but the only portion they'll be specifically using is right in front of their building.
Correct. We didn't want to infringe on the neighbors parking in front of their houses, so we thought this year we'd get our feet wet, maybe next year we'll try to coordinate it a little more in advance and possibly go further down the street. But for this year, we'd just like to
Have access, though.
See what we can do, see if we can be mildly successful this year.
Aim higher. I said aim higher. You said mildly successful.
Okay, anyone else have any questions on it?
Did you let the neighbors that are along your side on Philadelphia Avenue know that you were doing this Harvest Day? Because not a lot of them there are on social media.
No, we haven't. We haven't done a whole lot in the planning state yet, because we wanted to skip through Borough Council approval before we put the cart before the horse, you know?
Okay.
Until November.
But we will speak to the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, you still have to go through the permitting process for the closure. Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes eight-zero. Good luck with your event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion 9H, call for motion to authorize the appropriate borough officials to execute the 2019 CDBG agreement for the Stark Summer Seat Accessibility Improvements Phase 2 in the amount of $325,000. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-zero. Motion 9I, call for motion to authorize advertising adoption of the proposed 2020 budget at the Borough Council meeting on November 18th, public hearings on the 2020 budget to be held on November 7th and 8th, and adoption of the final 2020 budget on December 16th, 2019. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Well, we had a lot of questions on this motion. I don't know if anybody else has anything else. So we'll take a roll call on this one, please.
Well, I just had a really quick question. I mean, again, the administration had October 21st as the first budget meeting. Is there any way we could have it on the 22nd? Because I think the 21st is a Monday. So we have that whole weekend of October open. That was what the administration, that was what the borough manager put in here, October 21st. So if we could possibly have it that week, October 22nd, 23rd, 24th?
This is what we set up with the manager.
I don't know who "we" is.
Me and the manager set it up according to what would be best for him and doing the budget. So this is what's set for. If you don't agree with it, don't vote for it. This is the dates we set up. And next week, please, please come to the financial committee meeting. That's the first one that's gonna be out here, and bring your financial statement.
Well, again, I just don't know where that October 21st date came from then, and that first agenda that was given out, because that's over two, four weeks.
Because the manager apologized to me and said he didn't have a chance to talk to me first. I should have contacted him before he put that out there to the council, because I then called him and asked him if we could work on these different dates. That's the dates that are set. Either vote for it or don't.
Well, again, that just shows to the residents.
Again, this is our motion.
That there's not even a conversation that can be had.
Well, there wasn't a conversation when you voted on New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve, and New Year's again, from 15th, 16th, and 17th. Not a word, and I was on the council with you.
There were conversations in May, June, and July, and August, again, where we were told it would be in September.
Six weeks is plenty of time to pass that budget.
Okay, well, again, you told the residents.
Okay.
That's good.
That's good. You did too. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilman Driesbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
No.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
No.
Councilwoman Parker?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-3. Those are our action items. There's no unfinished business. I don't believe there's any new business. Borough officials at this time, if anyone has anything to say.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that Marsville Restaurant Week is coming up. It is the first full week in October, October 6th through 12th. We do have a Facebook page, so please like and share that. We have nine restaurants this year. So please, yeah, come on out. We have the nine restaurants for seven days. And Salute Day has a lunch and a dinner menu, so check out the Facebook page for the menus. Thank you.
I have something.
Sure.
I just wanted to let everyone know that on October 5th, the Recreation Board has been, Recreation Advisory Board has been working very hard on having an event in Marsville with the borough. And we are going to have 12 food trucks, 16 vendors, and two, definitely two bands, possibly more. One is Plush, and the other is the Blue Wave Ramblers. I understand they're very good, and we'll also have a DJ. Yes. Okay, so, and we're going to have events for the children, we're gonna have games, and possibly painting pumpkins. So I'd like to have everyone come out and enjoy themselves. Thank you.
What's the times?
Oh, it's October 5th from 11:00 to 4:00.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Dustin, did you have something?
Uh, no.
Okay. I just want to follow up again on the Red Bridge. I have spoken with a mill, and we will be able to move forward at the end of November. The only thing we have to do is to seal the end grains in order to prevent any splitting. So we're back on target.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:24.
We'll dispense with that.